I just want to confirm that Adam Heatbrink is on and can hear us.
Can you unmute him?
You might want to see about.
Hold on, Adam, we're unmuting you.
See if the pastor's out there.
Thank you.
Okay, is. Is Pastor Gary Mays online too, or?
I didn't see his name on there.
Okay, alright.
He's on an iPhone.
Okay, I call this a regular session of the Red Oak City Council to order this Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P. M. here at the Red Oak Fire Station located at nineteen oh four North Broadway. Just a reminder, this meeting is open to the public and is being recorded via Zoom. Oh, invocation unless Pastor Mays is online. If someone else would like to say the prayer. This is for. We've cast any doubt? Alright, alright, we will skip it. A number three pledge of allegiance, Tim, would you please lead us and the flags are this way today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number four is roll call. Ashley?
Bradley?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Bradall?
Here.
Heatbrink?
Here.
Alright, number five is approve of the agenda. Just a note that we will be moving on number fourteen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three, regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-six wages to, it is actually number twenty-five after the closed session.
I'll move to approve the agenda with those modifications.
Okay, Bills? Bradley? Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradall?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yep.
Number six is proclamations and special notices. I just want to acknowledge the Red Oak Arts Destination Group for the completion of the mural now on the north side of five eighteen North East Reed Street.
Five one eight North Fourth.
Well, the bill, yeah, but the mural is on Reed, so.
It's on the east corner of Fourth and Reed.
Fourth and Reed.
There you go.
It looks beautiful and I just want to acknowledge that I'm grateful for the fact that we have a group like them and the Southwest Iowa Arts Group that continue to contribute to our community's art, music, and culture, which just adds and improves our community. So I do think they have two more planned, planned for two more murals in the next coming year if they can raise enough funds. So I just want to acknowledge Jim Hoskinson and Phil Lamb and all involved for their hard work in that, raising the money to do that. Number seven, public comments. We have two. Keith Stacy?
It'll be Kenneth.
Or Kenneth, I'm sorry. I would just ask that you come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes. Ashley has a card that she will hold up when you have thirty seconds left.
Okay.
Alright.
My name's Kenneth Stacy and I live thirteen oh five North First Street here in Red Oak. I want to address the council, uh, due to the water bill ordinance, due to my circumstances of my pay schedule and my disability, I get paid the third Wednesday of every month. And some people on disability get paid the fourth Wednesday of every month. So that will make us on fixed income pay an eight dollar late fee every, every time. Uh, and I'm not, and, and then there's nothing listed about like, okay, this fifteenth is on a Sunday. So is it due the thirteenth now? Or are we given to the following Monday before we get the late fee? And what about holidays? So I was going to ask, is there a hearing that I can schedule for with the city council? Or to explain my circumstances, or? What do I need to do? I need to see if the city has like a hearing that I can schedule due to my circumstances and everybody else's circumstances on fixed income. I mean, we're given no leeway, like after the fifteenth, we're not given five or ten days. The thirtieth, everybody would have got their check, they would have had, you know, they, they wouldn't have had a reason not to pay their bill that they would have automatically got a late fee. Well, in my circumstances, I live month to month and pay period to pay period every, every month. So I'm always going to require an eight dollar late fee, which is a hundred dollars a year. Well, that pays for my injections. That would pay one month of my injections. So I know there's other people on disability or fixed income, I know there's senior citizens the same way, that they would be the same way. They're always going to require a late fee. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of targeted, I feel like, I'm targeted because of when I get my pay scheduled. So I didn't know, can, is there any way to work the date out to the survey?
So just, just for, for your information, we don't, we don't respond, we listen and we don't respond to, to what you're saying. But we're, we're listening to you.
Okay, so that's what I have to say as far as the city.
Okay, thank you for pointing those things out. Okay, great, thank you. Um, Chris?
Christopher Scorn.
Scorn? S K O R N. Got it. Alright.
Give you one minute here. I know about taking the time about the state law, about under that three minute thing. So I know about that. So I want to be quick as possible, to the point. Alright, well, it's very, I want to make my voice known. It could be a mouthpiece for the rest of the city citizens here that really don't know what's really going on. Sometimes even I do. My, uh, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Christopher Scorn and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for allowing me to do this. I'm here tonight to raise a serious concern regarding the appointment, identification, and public accountability of the individual acting as the city attorney. Official appointment to me was improper misleading. On August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the council approved the appointment of Brianna Sorensen as city attorney. However, that is not a licensed attorney's name. It is the name of a law firm, not a person. The actual attorney providing legal services is Brianna O'Hern, whose legal name and credentials are registered under I S L Latin, which is Iowa State License Number one zero zero one four nine five nine four eight. The attorney has never been publicly introduced. Brianna O'Hern is not listed in the city staff directory, not present at city council meetings, and has never been officially introduced to the public. This leaves the citizens in the dark about who is advising the city on legal matters, matters. The city's payments show a contractual relationship. Payment records show she has paid one thousand three hundred fifty-six point two five under retainer and service, not as a salary employee. This suggests she's not a full-time attorney, but rather a contracted attorney used as needed a de, a de facto counsel, not a de juror official city attorney. Public misrepresentation in media, KMA radio. The city has referenced in her public media under the name Brianna Sorensen, which does not exist as a licensed attorney. This may amount to misleading the public as there is no public record of her lawful appointment under the real name. The attorney is actively practicing in another city, which is Shenandoah, Iowa. Brianna O'Hern is based in Shenandoah, Iowa, and actively takes on private clients there. This supports the conclusion, the Red Oak is not her primary role. Further questioning whether she can be considered our city attorney, legal and ethical concerns, I'm almost there. This is a legitimate question or whether city ordinance and legal decisions are being reviewed and advised by an individual who was never officially or lawfully appointed. This raises issue of transparency, public trust, and I don't trust none of this town, and possibly.
Thirty seconds.
validity of legal actions taken under her name. Request for counsel action. I respectfully request that the council publicly clarify who's currently acting as city attorney. Disclose any contracts or agreements with Brianna O'Hern or Bree Sorensen Law. Consider reappointing the attorney by her legal name in transparent public vote. Update the city staff listing to reflect actual legal representation. Closing. Citizens have a right to know who's advising their city. We also deserve clear, honest communication from our public officials.
That's kind.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments online? Okay, number eight, department reports. Have any?
They'll be listed on if they are.
Alright, number nine is consent agenda. This includes the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting on June second, twenty twenty-five, and the downtown urban renewal minutes from six four twenty-five and six eleven twenty-five. Liquor license for the annual Red Oak Elks Lodge number thirteen oh four and two, five-day licenses for Montgomery County Agriculture Society for June twenty-sixth through thirtieth and July sixteenth through the twentieth. Tobacco license for Family Dollar Store of Iowa LLC, street closure for the Fair Cross Events, the Fourth Street from Cherry to Sunset Streets, June twenty-eighth and July seventeenth. And then the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five claims to be paid.
I also had, uh, you got added bills this evening and then the park board did not have a form. And here on week, going on week five, not getting bills and I just don't think it's.
Yeah.
Because they had a, you know, they only meet once a month. So there's like the month. And then now we're starting on week five and it obviously affects like co-mingled accounts. And so we're also to approve those and then park board when they decide to meet can review.
I'll move to approve.
That includes the park board minutes.
I'll prove, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
With the addition of the park.
Yes.
Claims.
I'll second that.
Okay, did you get that? Ashley? Bills, Brad, Bradoff, roll call?
Bradoff?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Number ten is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten. This is the third and final reading of the use of right-of-way for community events. Basically, we are allowing the city administrator and the chief of police to work with the city streets and to decide, make decisions on routine, normal events that we've had in the past, um, and anything new would probably come before the.
So it doesn't, so they can just do this, doesn't have to come.
It doesn't have to come for our approval.
I will move to approve the third and final reading.
Okay, Bills? And the second? This is third and final, but, oh, Bradley is the second, I'm sorry. Alright, so Bills and Bradley, first and second, roll call.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Number eleven is resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six. This is regarding the water and sewer department lawn mower purchase. Uh, this is because we continuously have lawnmowers that are breaking down and there is currently a model at a Dickel Do-It that is available. Correct.
So didn't we just buy a new lawnmower for the water department?
We have to have, there's usually two to three that we have to have in stock.
Yes.
So we need at least two, and then the third one that has been owned by them is also used for all the nuisance. So we're down to one because the one that we ordered is not coming in until August.
So August and will be up one?
No, we'll be back to three. And again, you know, they assist with the nuisance properties.
No, I'm, I'm not saying this, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around it because it seems like we just bought one.
Yes.
You did, but.
But then it got delayed.
But it got delayed.
The last one was from Dear.
John Dear was the last.
Agrovision.
Agrovision, yeah.
This is Dickel Do-It.
Chris, you got, do you know anything about it at all?
Yeah, they delayed on the order. So Clint told me that they're, we're not going to see it till late July or August, so.
So we're quickly better than pack right now, so.
So the one that's available, the Dickel Do-It, is twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
There's budgeted money in the, uh, between the two in their equipment fund.
Okay.
Between the two departments.
So they have it budgeted.
Do we know if Brandis is coming from there? I don't see.
Beyond the thing. It's a Kawasaki.
Yeah, Hustler Kawasaki.
Kawasaki engine.
Engine.
Oh, I see it there now. Okay, I got it now.
Yep.
I just hadn't gone far enough.
Twenty percent discount.
We mow a lot of grass. And obviously with the cemetery and parks, you know, those are usually your biggest users and so they don't really have any capacity to give any up when we're down or else they'll be behind because they're mowing all day, every day.
Motion.
Okay. Bradley?
I'll second.
Bradoff? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yeah.
Okay, number twelve is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven. This is the first of three readings. It's in addition, adding more detail to our nuisance grass and weeds chapter fifty-seven um, and allows us the opportunity to use the door knocker and be able to go on property to, to mow much more timely than what we've been able to do in the past based on what it was written. Do you want to expand anything, Lisa?
So Bree kind of worked on this with me, but it would be basically every spring, we would put a notice in the paper. There'd be an ad explaining what the rules are with the six inches and what our process is. And then going forward, it would just be a forty-eight hour notice with a door hanger after that as a courtesy. Um, instead of right now, we're sending letters and obviously with the non-expedited way of doing it, you know, the, it's gone from like long grass to hayfields by the time we ever get there.
So now we'll put the door knocker on, forty-eight hours later, we're cutting the grass.
It's a real bad deal. Try to get ahold of.
So if you try to get ahold of, no, via other communication.
Or whatever.
Because a lot of those that are outside owners or whatever, so.
Wow, I still have.
Yeah, I understand.
When people come in, like with their utility bills now, we're trying to get people's emails, we're trying to get their phone numbers. Like we just have super old records. So we have sheets of paper out at the front counters just trying to say, hey, if there was ever an emergency, need a bill to get ahold of you.
Okay.
This is, this was Bree's suggestion to make sure, and I've gotten quotes on door hangers. So we'll do door hangers for snow removal, for grass, and then Clint is going to order a set for water and sewer with the grass. Like I just drove here up Fourth Street, there was a house that all the snow, or the snow. Uh, the grass is blown into the road, so we would have that be one of the boxes that we can check.
Sure.
You know, just to try and then.
Have you looked at source for those yet?
Yeah, I'm looking at the same printers that we're talking about for utility bills. Motion to approve.
I have moved to approve first reading.
Bradoff?
I'll second.
Bradley? Do I need to give a longer delay, Adam, for you?
No, we're good.
Got a first by Bradoff, second by Bradley. Any further discussion? Other than this will be a great improvement to our process. Roll call.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Number thirteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-two. This is the annual Montgomery County Library Agreement for Library Services. It is the same amount as it's been in the past few years. And it is, there's nothing new that I could see for seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty-six, and it gives myself and the city clerk the authority to sign all legal, legal documents.
Has the county approved it?
Yep, please.
They're on track, yeah.
Yep, see.
Well, I will so move.
Okay, Bills?
I'll second.
And Bradley? Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yeah.
Okay, number fourteen is moving down. Number fifteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-four. This is the downtown urban renewal grant funding approval, and I just was sharing with Tim that I think this is much cleaner than the way it used to be done, which it was, they were just in the budget. Or you just saw them in the expense forms.
Has started, um, it's given us a lot of clarification to the D O R board. That was really, we couldn't understand before some of the items, but since she's joined us and, and she's taken over the, um, uh, paperwork for the D R, we are, and it's been great. So I appreciate that.
Excellent. Alright, and so this is to approve, just second, several different ones, um. This is to approve.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, sorry. Thirty-nine, uh, the Carba State Farm, one-one-one East Reed Street Office Remodeling Grant for seventy-five hundred. The Red Oak Grand Theater at four-ten East Coolba Street for tuck pointing in the amount of seventy-five hundred. Sloppy Joe LLC, three oh six East Carbus, or Coolba, Cool, Coolba Street Apartment Remodeling for two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Route D three is for three oh four East Coolba Street Apartment for HVAC and insulation, install, insulation in the amount of seventy-five hundred, and then Route D, uh, for three oh two East Coolba Street for their office electrical in the amount of seventy-five hundred. This comes from our D R funds. We have approximately seventy thousand in those in there annually.
And I think that through the years and, um, that this has been a great benefit to our downtown because it helps, we, um, we have all of our buildings as well as do some of the upstairs apartments and windows. And it's just been a great.
And this can only be twenty-five percent of the total project. So those amounts is twenty-five percent of their total project.
What year do we start? What year do we start?
With the max seventy.
Do you know?
It's two thousand, um, oh, gosh.
Want to say.
It's five-year agreement, you know, it's about a couple of year, a couple of chunks.
This is like, I want to say twenty, yeah, Denise might remember.
Well, it's.
It's been a while.
It's certainly made a difference in our downtown.
Yeah.
And but the least it's helped a lot, reputation.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to approve the resolution.
Okay, Bills?
I'll second it.
Heatbrink?
Any discussion? Thank you for your help on that, Lisa. I know they were needing, they were needing some city support, so. Roll call.
Bradoff?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Number sixteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-five for the monthly utility billing nailing. And Lisa spelled out a really nice memo here that gives us a great deal of insight. Do you want to go over any of this?
You know, we obviously intended to have this conversation before we went to a full-page bill. Um, but then we couldn't get it to print for whatever reason, it was postcards. And so we had to hit print and go with the full pages. It's obviously created a lot of questions in the bills. So I think long-term, the detail is better, but it definitely has, uh, created a lot of longer conversations at city hall with people. We're going to try to come up with some sort of a, kind of an explanation type, you know, arrows to different things. So if you look at, people are used to having one line item for water and one for sewer. So most communities will show that separately so that people understand that there is a base fee that you get charged no matter what the water consumption is. Um, and then obviously we had also the same month that we were adding the four dollars and we changed the due dates and we had a new averaging of the sewer, so.
Yes.
Uh, there are a lot of things.
Lot of things.
That are just taking a lot of time and trying to help people understand. You know, some people like it, some people don't, obviously. I think that it gives us a better way. If you look at, you know, the way that we could communicate with people on those postcards, super difficult. You could never really add anything other than A C H payments are, you know, deducted before on the twentieth or whatever. You could never put messages. People complained, for example, that we couldn't give a heads up that June fifteenth was before June fifteenth because there was no way to put that on the postcards, but May fifteenth. So if you looked at the bill, that whole right side is kind of open and you can create messages there. If we ever want to do some sort of a newsletter, um, it's only a couple hundred dollars to add another sheet of paper that could be like a color copy, two-sided newsletter that could go with it. The mail is obviously already there, the envelope is being stuffed. And so if you look at the cost of labor to pay a printing company to do it, I would say it's not much more expensive than what we would pay staff to do it. Obviously, it's just that we're continuing to pay the staff to do other things for the amount of things that we need to work on to, to kind of get things back up to snuff. I think this will be helpful, not only, you know, I like the way it looks better, it's private, nobody's looking at your postcard that everybody can see, postcards stick together. Often, we get a lot of people that say they never get their postcards. Whether this will change that or not. What am I recommending?
A lot of time, mail gets them delivered to other, if they get stuck in between the letters, the delivery might have that happen a lot. So I like, and I've had some positive comments about the, about the full-size bill.
Well, and I like the idea to be able to print notices and things like that on it. And then, like you say, if we could do a newsletter, I, I've been in communities where they do newsletters and, and they can be informational.
Just to send fire in there, you know, like what we're doing.
For just a few hundred dollars in that entire mailing to do a one.
I can see you're doing the postage, the envelopes.
It's cheap.
Yeah, you just believe.
That's really good.
Paper. So it was only a few hundred dollars.
Yeah. Very good.
Yep.
So I would recommend, I also reached out to three companies. One of our city staff people has a spouse that's kind of in the fixed copy machine world. And so they gave me some names of people that they were well aware of. So I reached out to three companies in Omaha. Two of them responded pretty equal in the pricing, just kind of like the conversation that I had with one or the other. And, and again, at least, uh, you know, they've, they've both done utility bill printing, so this is a new world. We just have to get it set up through Civic. Um, I think it'll just be a, like a reprint from a, basically a twenty-seven hundred page PDF that they'll print. We will do it black and white, this last time we did color. Um, but I think we'll just do black and white, so you just won't see the little bit of red in the logo just because it's cheaper that way.
And they stuff envelopes to it.
It'll fold, stuff, mail, we'll have them printed. The other thing that are just some of the things that are savings. So we used to just order a few envelopes at a time, like some boxes. Um, if we will agree to a year with them, whichever firm that we go with, they will print a year's worth of envelopes and store them. So we used to pay for all the things that we used window envelopes for, which was mainly the disconnect notices. We were spending over ten cents an envelope and now it'll be under five cents an envelope. So it was around four hundred dollars savings just for the envelopes that we were using for the disconnects, which obviously we still use. They'll have our new letterhead on them. And then the other thing that we weren't doing when we were mailing disconnects is we found out from the post office that you only need a hundred pieces to do the, um, postal permit for bulk mailing. And we were never mailing them out that way. And so we should also be able to save on the rate that we pay for those because we'll get the envelope. So you have to have it printed on the envelope. Obviously, we had it printed on the postcards. So we're going to do a few thousand boxes of window envelopes with no postage permit thing. Um, and then after that, and I don't even know if, like when Karen does bills, if there's a hundred envelopes that go out for that, we could even use those for bulk mailing.
Can we do the option on, uh, online for A C H payments to opt out of the paper billing?
We're trying really hard to get people to do it.
Yeah.
Even if they don't want no paper, we're trying to say, just because of the shorter timeframe between the first and fifteenth, even if they just give us their email, they can get the email in case. Even if they just give us their email, they can get the email in case something happens with the post office. That they can still get their bill and know what amount it is, have those records. So we're signing quite a few people up and some of the bigger, like accounts, like the school, we're getting them switched over, places like that.
How many people are A C H now?
So I feel like in internal us doing it, there's somewhere around six hundred. And then I probably haven't checked in a month online to see how many people are paying online. Uh, but the last time I checked, it was over seven hundred accounts, so.
That's like twenty percent.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And there's just more options for them online now, you know, like they used to always have to go on each month and do it, now you can do auto pay.
And so if, i- if that were the case, and for all those A C Hers, if we didn't have to send them a paper bill, that would be.
We're trying.
That'd be.
Some people are super like, no, I need paper.
Yep.
But we're trying. Um, I was with some of my colleagues this last week and there are communities that are actually charging for paper bills now. So it's a buck a month if you want paper.
So.
We'll leave that alone.
So leave that alone, please.
This is the savings of staff time.
Big time.
Do you have an estimate of what that would be?
I know that Donna, I mean, I've obviously done it just because of the last couple of months myself. And when you were actually having to look through things, like just the process of like printing, ripping apart, getting them all ready is at least a full day, I would say, for one person.
And this will eliminate that.
Yep.
Just hit go.
Make up for the additional cost.
The other thing that I'm hoping is because our mail goes to Omaha anyway and they would be in Omaha. So what I'm hoping is that it's not there and back, that maybe.
I'll get it quick.
If they're just taking it directly to an Omaha post office, that maybe the turnaround back to us will be quicker. We won't know until it gets mailed from there.
Yeah, I would think it would be a few days shorter.
Right, I mean, I don't know what it means when we take them at two, by two o'clock and then, I don't know how quickly it turns back, but. I don't know.
Yeah.
Assuming it still goes there that night, but.
Should be faster. Now, the, the savings on our staff time is huge and the fact that we can use it for more things is also big. And I think the turnaround time will be much quicker, so. All right, so this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven-five, it's for, uh, it's prepared for the, moving to the full-page monthly billing and hiring leading-edge printers out of Omaha to complete the work.
I'll move to through.
Bradley? Bills? Any further discussion? Roll call. Hebra?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradoff?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to add anything. Number seventeen is utility billing update. Is there anything further you want to discuss with that?
I guess just, you know, updating the council, obviously, it is taking a lot of time to answer people's questions. Um, if you get questions, you know, certainly let us know. Not an easy process to go through, um, you know, I would kind of make an appeal to the public to try and be respectful of the staff. Obviously, those who collect the bills are not the ones who recommend, as in myself or you who make the policy. But people have been incredibly disrespectful to our staff and it's been a pretty rough month. Just because of all the changes and, um, so hopefully people can understand that, you know, there's no ill intention. Obviously, some of the things that we're trying to do, like inform landlords, for example, we had a deceased lady get a bill. And that family could just simply not understand, like, they thought it was super disrespectful. But what happened was is that it kicked out an old name that then got sent out. And so she got, because the person that lives there now was late, somehow it was still linked to her as the tenant, that she was the landlord. And so it kicked out because we never used to notify landlords when there was delinquencies. So in the spirit of trying to keep people informed, there's people that get weird stuff that aren't supposed to get it. And so we're, you know, hopefully with the new requirement that landlords have to be connected to their accounts. We're going to try, uh, some of the things we're going to have Hannah work on are taking the three hundred rental inspections that are officially registered this year. And then cross-check that information over to the utility billing. Because Beacon can be outdated, you know, it's not, not that it's outdated, but delayed sometimes and how that information gets out there. And it's super difficult to be constantly checking other sources of information to make sure that our information is accurate. And so we're certainly trying, uh, there are a few people that have shortchanged us on the four dollars, thinking that they're not going to pay. Um, so kind of letting people know that all of your bills are linked together and what we disconnect is water. And so if you choose to shortchange us, uh, we will take action that your bill's not paid. And normally, we probably, you know, give some sort of grace to people who only shortchanges four dollars. But when you know they're crossing off the four dollars, the six ninety, and writing two ninety as their, you know, rebellion to the six ninety. I don't think we have a choice but to say, we're going to, you, you have to get people to understand. I had a phone call that said, I'm not going to use it. Said, well, you know, city councils have a right to create ordinances that do across-the-board charges. And then it's your option to use it, just like recycling has been, whether you use it or not, you assist in paying for it. And so hopefully, people will, you know, change.
How many of those have you had?
One number.
We saw, there was probably four today that we saw, you know, and today was the due date. Um, the other thing that's easier, like I think one of the gentlemen that spoke said, what happens when it's on the weekend? So it's a lot easier in this billing system to change the due date. And so we will make sure that like when a fifteenth is on a Friday, or excuse me, on a Saturday or Sunday. Um, we're just going to put the Monday date, so that it's clear to people that they do genuinely have until Monday.
Okay, would it be worth updating ordinance to say that?
No, that's a typical course of business. That's normal.
Okay.
But it's just, you know, if it, we can put, it's simple, super simple that when Donna's like looking through the process, it just says what you put. We just have to make sure that she goes back. Um, we found it a lot easier to print the bills for people. There were a couple of things that didn't show. And as people are coming in with comments, we're trying to be cognizant of the things that people have questions about, like sewer usage. Which isn't really sewer usage, you know, it's based on the average of water usage, that consumption number wasn't on there. And so, um, I sat with Civic and they showed me how to change it. So now going forward, if we reprint a bill for people, it shows it, and then going forward for next month, it'll show it as well. But people don't understand the averaging thing. You know, they just don't understand, like, I, I don't know, I guess people didn't notice before, but there is a penalty at times for being transparent.
Yeah.
Like people get more angry about things.
And again, the point that needs to be shared is many of these changes are because of the entire software update and transition. And I don't have a choice, we're recreating everything, every report, every bill, every invoice. They all have to be reprogrammed with the company that's doing it. And so that the fields or the tech content is trans, um, transfers into the right fields on these forms. So there will be some things that will be, they're still accurate information. Or like that one situation with the deceased person. Um, just because we haven't connected those types of things in the past. We're catching a lot of those types of things and it's, I've, I've asked on social media if people would please give us some grace for the next three months. Because it's just going to take a little bit of time to work through some of these things. And there's always weird situations, um, that you also have to account for. So I would just ask the public to, again, extend grace to the city staff. They are working diligently and hard and I've been in City Hall to hear some of the conversations that have not been pleasant and disrespectful and it really upsets me, so.
The last thing is, we're working hard right now on getting that eight-hundred-person list about the set-off program. You have to have people's socials and so most of them we have, but we're kind of on the last phase of those that weren't right in gene works in the old system. So we're trying to find those socials and then those will be going out. So again, people won't know they're there, waiting for them until they would ever file for a tax return, so.
And that's the other thing, is not all the information was completely up-to-date or accurate in some of the old system. So as we transition over, it's much more accurate and much more streamlined, so. And will be much better in the long run. Ready? Number eighteen is discussion on nuisance and animal control officer position.
So we have a vacancy again, we have not advertised yet, we've been discussing it at the department head meetings. Um, I think we feel pretty strongly that one of the most important things is, while it's painful for all of us that are there to have the vacancy. Uh, we need to make sure that we do what we can to select someone who fully understands the position.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that we've talked about is there are a lot of communities that don't pick up dogs just running loose. Um, whether we choose to not do that anymore, we obviously need to address any of them that are being aggressive or doing something wrong. Um, in one of the conversations that I had with Minnie's parents through that. You know, my position would have been thinking as we were discussing kind of what happened. Um, I said, it feels like it would be better to get your dog and get them safe as opposed to letting them run around. And what if they got hit by a car or something like that? And it was interesting to hear someone else's perspective to say, but if something did happen, that it would be on the owner's fault for it being loose as opposed to, you know, if something happens, well, it's in our custody. Um, I do want everyone to know because that kind of blew up, that we had a really good, a really good meeting with them. Um, we've had good communications. I think we all can learn from those kinds of situations, you know, they're young. And just like we asked for people to provide grace to city staff, I felt like that was the right thing to do for them, that we worked through it, talked. I actually went over to their house and met the dogs just as a, you know. I do care and I want people to know that we do care about those things. They had a good conversation. Um, Officer Josh Roberts was also on the call and so he was there and really explained and they felt a lot better after the meeting. And so as we move forward with this, you know, that is one option to create less work, um, in that area. Is that if people's dogs are running around unless something's wrong, you know, we'll say, you know, we can post it even that we saw your dog, but we're not picking it up. We obviously don't pick up cats right now. And, and then we really just have to address the nuisance side of it. Um, Hannah is helping me work on and I was waiting for some information from Bree. So at the next meeting, we'll be starting our process of announcing that we're going to sell all of the properties that we can. Which will also assist in, you know, they have to help with the nuisance properties and unload some of those, it will be helpful. Um, all the city staff, obviously Chief Bruce, uh, Brad, who has been in the position before, has been super helpful. Chris, you know, all the different departments have been working collectively to try and do the things that we have to do, even when the position was full. Because it's just a lot for one person. So I know some of you have talked about some other ideas. I think, um, you know, there was conversation about who they should report to, what kind of certifications they should have. At least amongst the staff, I don't know that we feel like it should be, uh, an official employee of the other departments. But I think we're open to all trying to work together on it and make sure that, obviously, that we're not rushing to just pick someone to pick them and get the right.
So, so my thoughts on this are that, you know, we've, we've been down this road so many times. And it always ends up in the same place where we have someone that really wants to do a good job, that gets threats, their family gets threats. And I feel like that's because they don't really have anything other than, as, as an authority, other than just being a city employee. And I know, uh, Chief Ramery probably doesn't want to hear it, but I mean, if there was something we could do to certify him as some type of an officer when, then there would probably a lot less problem with that, I don't know, chief.
You're going to be in the same boat you're in now, because nobody's wanting, they don't want to come be a police officer and be in the control.
Well, and, and I've, you know, I, that was my initial response to even that thought. But then I started thinking that perhaps somebody that is qualified to do that would like the, you know, not having to work a night shift and not having to work weekends and still have the Bennys and the pay of being a, a regular officer.
Yeah, there, there's a lot to work out in that, uh, you know, I guess in the grand scheme of things, um, you know, what happens? So I'm, I'm in a situation, I'm down officer and I have an officer that's certified, he's not going to be doing nuisance control at that point.
No, you know, I mean, there's, there's things like that to consider, absolutely. I'm, all I'm saying is if, if, if a police officer goes to someone and, uh, I, um, pretty much guarantee you, they're not going to get threats, their family's not going to get threats. To the same degree that, that.
We get them all the time.
I see, I see. Well, that's hard to imagine, because I think that's a felony, is it not? Isn't that a felony to threaten a police officer?
Depends on the course of the, the course of what's going on, you can, anybody has open the right to threaten me, I mean. If you take action on that, that's a whole different story.
I see.
We're, we're subject to this, this public ridicule within, within the public, we are subject to that.
I see.
You can drive by and you can hauler stuff at us and we can't criminally charge you. You drove by and hauled it to him and he has a problem with it, we can criminally charge you for that.
I, I get it, I get it, I just, uh, I guess being someone that tries to, you know, be respectful to police officers, I just. I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it. So that being said, I just, I don't know what the sit, what the solution is going to be then. Because, you know, I mean, people are not bulletproof, people don't have thick enough skin to take threats every day. And that their children get threatened, their wives get threatened, it's, it's pretty sad.
Yeah. It is. And the other thing is, uh, returning to not picking up animals, that's what we did for many years. Um, and I don't think that's a answer, in fact, my brother's dog got hit by a car on Sunday and killed, so. It happens. And that's my fear is, it also can cause a major accident. If somebody like me is going to hit an animal, I'm going to swerve, I'm going to try to miss it and I just think it causes unnecessary accidents. So I don't know at the end either, um, there's a number of reasons why I think it would fit well under the police department for similar things that you're saying, but, um, I definitely understand the chief's concerns about it as well. We did connect the computers to their software, so that makes it another reason why it could potentially work. Um, making them a licensed animal office, animal patrol officer would be a specific training. I don't know what that is like in Iowa, I just know what it is in Nebraska.
So I got a call from a gentleman while I was at an outing on Friday and I did not understand what he was calling about. But he said, I'm from Emerson and I'm a licensed nuisance officer. And I was like, do you want to try out, we have an opening, like, why are you calling me? Well, he was actually like wildlife and so it was somebody with squirrels or whatever. So then I said, well, is there a licensing? Like that sort of, you know, piqued my interest as I was talking to him. And he was basically double-checking to make sure that he didn't need to check in with me or prove that he was certified to come and get these squirrels. I'm like, if we got nasty squirrels, like reckon someone's yard have at it, I guess. So he was teleporting them to somewhere else. But anyway, he said that as far as he knew, it was all based on wildlife, any kind of certification. So we'd have to look into that further if there's something else that we can do for domesticated animals, but not that I've found.
Maybe if we change our guidelines, like if they're out and about, you know, and if somebody doesn't, um, pick them up or they go back home at something for twenty-four hours, then we do something in a, to get, but, you know.
It's tough.
It's the first time they're out, so we should.
It's hard.
Try to do anything.
Somebody would say, how can you do?
A lot of dogs get out, you know, they post them on Facebook and then they're returned to their own.
It's tough, and then if we don't respond, then it's all over Facebook that we're not responding.
But that's only part of this job, so.
And the other part of this job is a huge part of this job. And the nuisance you can't ignore and, and.
I drove by stuff this weekend that I wanted to call you about that is obviously nuisance issues. But I didn't because I know we don't have an officer and I didn't want to throw stuff.
Overwhelming.
Play that you can't do anything about. So that being said, what kind of ideas have come from the staff or have gotten any ideas from the staff on how to handle this?
We're going to talk about it again tomorrow. I know Brad had a couple of things that he wanted to talk about, but he said we'd talk about it tomorrow. And I think when, um, the two chiefs and I talked about it this morning, it's really just about doing our due diligence to try and find the right person. It's just hard.
We did have some applicants from last time, well, before we hired Taylor. It might be worth going back and ask, finding out if any of them are still available or interested, plus the wages are higher, much higher now.
But a prison guard can't take the pressure, that's pretty.
I would have to say, I agree, yeah.
I don't even think it's, you know, it's just the public nature of it. It's different, like even a prison may be difficult, but no one knows what's going on in there, so.
Yeah.
This is most likely the family of the, you know, unless someone's seriously being beaten in prison. Nobody's talking about it like they do dogs and.
Yes.
I understand. Just, it's just, it's, it's not an easy solution to this.
Well, the threatening messages I got were just ridiculous. I'm sorry.
And again, I think it's hopefully a learning lesson for at least the people that were directly involved. You know, sometimes people take to social media and it's not their intention for it to get crazy, but it does.
Um, and it morphs into something that it absolutely wasn't.
Right.
Well, you're talking, and you're talking about one incident, it's more than that.
It's all the time, yeah.
So we will most likely think about advertising soon, we obviously have the position we're judging for, so we'll keep you informed. We'll talk about it tomorrow first.
Well, and once you have the door knockers for grass, you get a lot of calls on oversized gra, too tall grass and you can. What's our plan there? Just have an officer or somebody go put those out.
Right now?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and you know, we kind of, the grass length, you know, we do, when it gets really hot and dry, we kind of forego those regulations.
Well, it also slows down.
Yeah.
And mowing a little less. Mowing a little less out there.
Okay. Alrighty. Um, number nineteen is discussion on the League's Small City Workshop. Uh, the topic this time is capital improvement plans. It is going to be virtual. And it is offered on June eighteenth, twentieth, or twenty fourth. And I just wanted the council to be aware of it. I know Tim, myself, Brian, I think Sharon, you've all participated in some of these small city workshops. They're really valuable. They're really good. They're one to two hours long. Um, they're thirty dollars apiece. I would just encourage the council to participate in it.
This is a virtual.
This is a virtual one and it's on Capitol.
Are you gonna send invites?
Um, it is actually, I guess we could send an invite. It's on the League of Cities.
I need to sign you up if you want to go.
Need to let her know. Same thing with the annual conference, the League's annual conference is in September, the seventeenth through the nineteenth in Des Moines. I have to be there a day ahead because of my board meeting with the League. Um, and my mayor's association lunch and then. Um, it'll be a good, good another event. So if you're interested in attending the conference, let Lisa know too. Because hotels are pretty much filling up right now.
I I would like to attend. Yeah, I'll be going. And if you can get us in the same hotel that they have the conference, that would be wonderful. We've never done that before, so we'll always have to drive twenty minutes to get there, which. You know, a little bit.
Because it was cheaper. Or it was last minute. It's actually the fact that it's the last minute. You've gotta get the reservations now. Seventeenth through the nineteenth. How about Adam? Adam, are you interested or is that school?
Uh, I'll be working full time.
Okay. Alrighty. Um, if we have another new council person, maybe we'll keep that in mind for them if they can attend. And make sure they will also know about this. Nope, it won't happen in time. Never mind. All right. So the League of Cities Annual Conference, um, number twenty one is upcoming city council meetings. A regular meeting is July seventh.
Didn't mean. Did you skip my, oh, nevermind.
It's in your update. So we've got the regular meeting for July seventh. I think Lisa's gonna propose that we also have another meeting. The last Monday of the month, just like over lunch, if at all possible, to just uh approve the.
I think it's a meeting on Monday, the thirtieth. Just a bill paying meeting. Just such a big gap and there's just a lot of things coming in that would be better since we're cash basis. Once we cut the check, then. It's gone. I might even say the end of next week. I'll talk to Karen about it. Are you guys open if I send out something just to a lunch meeting?
What day was that again?
I'm good.
If it's the thirtieth, but then I'm starting to think like if they don't cash the check, it still doesn't do any good. So maybe I would try the Friday before.
So next Friday, the twenty six, twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh. You've got your Zoom meeting that day. The IRDC.
Oh.
That's at nine AM.
That's at nine AM. I'm saying noon, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to join virtually.
I'll let you know what Karen says, but it'd be the Friday, Thursday, Friday or Monday.
Okay.
Like five minutes.
Twenty sixth, twenty seventh, or thirtieth.
Pretty much just bills.
Okay. All right. Good deal. Uh, number twenty two is uh reports or comments, city administrator.
So you know that we got those, uh, we talked about this last time with the grants. So we have grants on three of the houses. And I brought to SWPCO about the asbestos that was not. Required by EPA if a property was taken by nuisance. Um, they've now declined administering the grant because of that.
Yeah.
So I'm getting the demo.
And what's the reason for that?
I'm not really clear. So.
Well, I'd like, I'd like feedback on that, please.
Because we got this word from Mel Penns at the DNR.
I understand, but for us, from a staff perspective, let's carry on. I already have the RFP prepared.
Yes.
I had them send it to me. We're just gonna go as long as we sign the little grant agreement that says we're gonna follow. Rules and provide them invoices and prove that we paid these bills. We'll get up to the fifteen thousand, so we can vet the process later, but we wanna get these things out. And down. Market Street, so.
You're planning on getting that out today or tomorrow?
And that, that decision was made by.
Yep, perfect.
But you sent the grant agreement. I'm gonna sign it because what's the difference? At least we. Even if it's my time to do it, we're gonna save a lot more money towards asbestos, so.
It's half, it's half the cost of the demo.
Uh, uh, there's a whole list of people.
And and I can think of. Three or four houses just off top of my head right now that are sitting abandoned, that have not been demoed, that should have been. Because they have asbestos siding on. So now that being said, now that we can probably get a demo.
So we are.
The five, if we get all five done, that's the five.
No, these are not ones that are on, but I'm talking about ones that are still privately owned, but people won't do anything with them because they have asbestos siding on.
My understanding was always if you're a resident, when when we did this in Cascade, if you're a residential. Single owner to take a house down, you do not have to comply with asbestos. And then this is added to me because I never really had this kind of nuisance stuff, but. If we ever took it down for a pro- a public project, you would have to go back to doing asbestos. So when we did it in Cascade, it was taking houses down for a library. And then we did have to take them and be compliant. But Mel, Mel from the DNR sent me the paperwork, so I'll fill it out and. I have the document ready. I'm planning to proceed with. The RFP is getting sent out tomorrow. And then my plan is hopefully to get them approved at the next regular call to me.
Okay.
And we're bidding it out in a three pack with the grants and then a two pack. And then I asked if they got all five, if they would give us a discount on the two pack. So I said we'd either approve it with two companies or one.
Okay, good. Drainage Way and Culvert, Hy-Vee.
So you know that we cleaned out the one um that Green Tree helped us with that was uh over by the farm field. That was across from Dollar General.
North of just the.
By their signs.
Car dealership.
Yep.
Uh, the other one that's almost worse is the one that's further south, that's between Natures and Hy-Vee. And then goes under the highway and then jogs south and then goes on the south side of the uh YMCA. So I've prepared a document, sent that out to five of our local excavators and then I'll be bringing a price back again at the next meeting. Um, the sediment in those culverts underneath the highway, um, I think when the chief went over there and looked at it, it's literally almost completely closed up.
Wow.
And we haven't done anything for a long time, so.
Yeah.
When Green Tree did that one, did they run anything unexpected or just just got it done?
We will only go to the backside in this proposal. We're only gonna go to the backside or the west end of the Hy-Vee parking lot. You know, there's a whole section that's very tree filled with, uh, when you get into where the co-op is. Adjacent to their property, but we're just gonna do this first phase and get the culvert cleaned out from the east side of the highway, underneath the highway and then all the way to the backside of Hy-Vee. Uh, Natures and Hy-Vee have been informed. They had some, you know, check in with us. Don't be just walking around our property. If we um end up on the Hy-Vee side, we need to put some sort of mats down so they don't wreck their asphalt. That's all in the bid document. And then I sent it directly to the excavators that I'm aware of. And then it's also on the website.
Okay, great. Citywide cleanup days?
Uh, hopefully it'll be a good day. Those of you that have offered to help, thank you. Uh, the city staff were kind of finalizing things. I think at when I did the packet, we were at thirty houses. I think we're up to over fifty now. That have asked for pickups. So, you know, some of it is obviously just elderly people. It isn't, you know, that they have a house full of junk, but. Definitely people I think that are utilizing it, appreciate it, and we're thankful to the volunteers, so we're kind of just trying to get everything. I'm gonna show everybody at the staff meeting tomorrow, kind of trying to get out in social media where people should enter. The volunteers will have their own entrance so that they're not getting in line with everybody. Certain roads will be, you know, that you can't travel through them. Checking IDs at the front end so that if people don't have IDs, they know they need to get out of line, so. Hopefully it goes smooth. Supposed to be nice and toasty.
For instance, like when I did the fourth, do we have to check IDs or just give directions?
Uh, you will probably be, if you're trying, if you're having them turn in the parking lot, hopefully the IDs will be checked for you.
Okay.
So if people are gonna enter at Eighth Street and the high school, they'll travel west through the high school. Then before they get to Fourth Street, there's like a little gravel where you can turn to the north, heading towards Alex. So then you'll stay in the parking lot, then you'll cross Fourth Street to get onto Alex, take Alex down towards the nursing home entrance. And then come in by the park building and the Court of Honor, head south and then go into the big parking lot for the fairgrounds. Uh, everything will be in that parking lot except for tires will be across the street by the Gold Fair Building. And then you'll exit out. Um, towards Fourth Street and then you'll be forced to head south on Fourth to get out of town, to get out of the site.
Excellent.
The people who are volunteering for the pickups, they will enter here on this unnamed street at the fire station. There'll be a person manning a barricade there. They'll have big, bright neon colored signs on their dashboard that identify them as volunteers, so the person doing the barricade isn't stopping. If someone else is there trying to get in, they'll just be told to go. They'll have some math showing people where to go, but the key is to start at the. At the high school at Eighth Street.
Are we still accepting anyone who calls in that needs, if a volunteer is available? So for anybody that's on social media seeing those statements, please help clarify that they can call City Hall if they cannot get things to their. To the drop off, so.
I started with a post of like, call by Wednesday. Um, you know, and I just have to kind of make piles of sort of. Hopefully we can make them in little pockets of neighborhoods so people aren't crisscrossing with the volunteers.
And this will not be the only one that we do. We'll have to, we have to figure out how much this one's gonna cost us.
Right.
I've seen a lot of comments that, you know, we're collecting a lot of money for this. And so what people don't understand is that we're paying all the tonnage. Of whatever comes to us. So it could be.
Not whatever, though. We really, I think, have done like, you know, tires are going their own way, E-waste, there's a lot of things that are free. There are some things that we'll have to pay for. Uh, we have paint cans that John Gross is gonna take. Um, and let them dry out and then dispose of them. We have the scrap metal people, which would be revenue versus expense. There is an expense to have them bring the semi down. We will also, in whatever room there is in the semis that come down, everything that's out at the. Street Department shop, that'll all be going into the scrap dumpsters from the tornado, so we'll be cleaning up that area as a part of it. So have that truck and can put in bigger pieces than what we thought to transport them.
Good deal. We've done a great job. Thank you. And thanks to all the volunteers, our council members volunteering. I'll be volunteering Saturday.
Be out of town.
You'll be out of town. Yep. Good deal. All right, um, the only thing I wanted to mention was that I did hold my roundtable mastermind, I called it. Um, Tim, Brian, Sharon all attended. We had a pretty good turnout, I thought, for the first one. At Southwest Community College and we decided on doing it quarterly. However, we're gonna try to do another one here. Um, with the service agencies, service, social service and also civic group or organizations. And then also business and industry and then come back again to the community leadership one. So. Um, with the idea that there's topics that we need, um, a wide group of people to be involved in those conversations about how we. Fix some of the things that people are complaining about. Like we all have pieces of some of those things, but we don't all have. A solution. So this way we've got more people working towards a common goal. Um, that's all I have. City Council. Tim?
Uh, I've had some MCDC meetings, that's about it.
Okay.
And county supervisor meetings, I attended your roundtable and uh. What is the other one? Oh, I attended the uh, the thank you dinner uh put on by the road group for the uh. Artists that did our new mural in town.
Excellent.
Very nice.
Adam, do you have anything to report?
I've just been staying busy with projects around town.
Okay, thank you.
And hey, Adam, speaking of that, uh, you're on uh flower watering duty starting tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll I'll be there Wednesday.
All right.
Thank you, watering wells today with the heat.
They're they're well watered, yes.
Okay. How about you, Sharon?
I attended the roundtable with the mayor. Um, also Erin um interviewed us for the cemetery walk, which was great. And that will be uh on the twenty seventh. Hope everybody can come.
What time does it start?
It starts at nine thirty.
And the cost?
And the cost is twelve dollars.
And and the discussion was had at the Court of Honor and they are gonna put up flags and stuff for you.
And the court of honor is also sponsoring that. And they've been very helpful. And then we have rides and we also have um. Maps and guides, so it'll be easy for to get, is, you know, helpful.
And what the cemetery walk is, is you've got individuals that have volunteered to act as individuals that are.
Portray that.
Portray the, uh, yeah.
The characters.
Like ten, ten people?
We had only six this year, because eight drug it out too long. It takes a full two hours to go around and listen to everybody. There's some great ones. We had a rehearsal in the library the other day and some of them are so good.
Good.
Anyway, and then there's a lunch following with a goodwill, with the free will donation at the gazebo.
Excellent.
So we hope everybody can come.
Thank you for all your work on that. Thank you for your work on that. It's awesome. I think it'll, it'll take off one of these days and be really.
Also, I attended the DUR meeting, the meeting, the special meeting that Lisa had, um. Altrusa and then Bassard, we had a grand reopening ribbon cutting at the Viceroy.
Yep. Okay. All right. All right, so now we are to number twenty four, which is where we will close uh to go into a closed session. Um, just, I'm gonna give a little heads up. So anyone that's in here that would. If you wanna come back in after the closed session, we can let you back in if you don't mind going outside. Um, or to the very back of the police department or the fire station. I think we prefer everybody to go outside. Is that accurate? Outside, um, and then we'll let you know when we come back into session, so.
Nothing's gonna be done when we come back in, really.
We do, we have to make.
I guess we will.
Have to do uh the resolution, number twenty five. So, um. Number twenty four is adjourned into a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty one point five one I. To evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge. Is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to the individual's reputation. And the individual requests a closed session. This is regarding compensation. Take a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
All right, Tim?
Second.
And Bradley. Thank you folks for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll let you know if you're out there to come back in.
Roll call. Ashley.
Bradley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so now we need to. Close this, Adam, and then do you have the other one or should we just call you on cell phone, maybe? That'd be easier.
I I have the other one. I I'll be able to get in too.
Okay, I'll log out of this one and then log into the other one.